So moved.
Second.
Second.
Um, favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So for the public participation, we'll start it off with a presentation by Cecily McGeehee from Miami University for the HRSA grants. We need to do a roll call.
Here.
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 Yes.
Here.
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 Um, well, thank you all for having me. My name is Cecily McGeehee. My maiden name is Hughes. I live at two seven nine six Somerville Road in Melford Township, but I grew up on College Avenue. Um, I think it's called Aspen now, so until I was about fourteen. So I do have a lot of experience in town and a lot of heart here. So, um, I, just to kind of jump right into it, I work at Miami University as a project director on a HERSA grant. So all of the things that I'm about to talk about are completely funded through this grant. A lot of neat things. I work on a few committees with Jessica Green and she asked that I present it, so, um. Okay, um, so to jump right in, the state of Ohio has been at the forefront of the addiction crisis since the opioid epidemic came to light in early two thousands and Butler County ranked third in the state for the number of unintentional drug overdose deaths by the county for the period of twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen. There is a slight lag of information as far as even looking up stuff for our county, but I know that Chief Deathridge or, I believe it's Jordan Meyer, the epidemiologist at Butler County General Health Districts, he can also answer some questions about giving some local numbers. Oxford Township is a HERSA-designated rural area, so due to its rural nature, these areas face unique challenges as we all have found out with mental health, um, with challenges in prevention, treatment, and recovery efforts within our community. So the Rural Communities Opioid Response Program is a multi-year initiative that addresses barriers to treatment for substance use disorder, so SUDs, including opioid use disorder. And our corp is supported through HERSA's federal Office of Rural Health Policy, and our corp is actually invested in two hundred and ninety-eight million dollars across one thousand four hundred and twenty counties since twenty eighteen. So, um, and we are, we're lucky enough to be one of those counties. So here's the map that shows rural designated areas. Uh, I am currently in great conversation with that department on trying to understand why some other areas in, around Oxford are not considered in that. So I might do like a Shawshank Redemption style and send them an email a day, but I'm not there yet. It's once a week, so, um, but unfortunately, the isolation and lack of access to treatment and untreated mental illness during the pandemic has only accentuated this issue. Um, initially, there was a spike right after everything shut down with overdose deaths, but then when everything was lifted for a little bit, um, the numbers kind of evened out to historical, um, what the historical numbers were in the past. So, um, in twenty nineteen, so oddly enough, before the pandemic started, um, the Butler County Mental Health and Addiction Recovery Services Board reached out to the Coalition for a Healthy Community. Amy, wave your hand. Yay. Um, to see if there was any interest in this grant, and there was. Um, as a stipulation for the grant, a consortium of community partners was formed to, for sustainability purposes, just to make sure that there was drive, um, and a lot of community partners that actually thought that this was something that we needed, and it is. Um, so they were awarded a one million dollar grant over a three-year period of time. The consortium members are Butler County Mental Health and Addiction Recovery Services Board, which is the fiscal agent for distributing the funds to Talawanda School District, Miami University, Coalition for a Healthy Community, Oxford Area, TriHealth, and Epiphany Community Services, which does the evaluation, making sure that we're hitting all the points that we need to on the grant. We also have additional support in our meetings from the Regional Harm Reduction Collaborative, and I'll go over more of what they're doing in our community because it's a lot of big things. And then also, recently, Butler County General Health District, and I will also share more information about that because we will be wanting to host a town hall meeting in May with some of the involved parties here. Oh, just can, did I turn it off? There we go. Um, consortium goals. These are just broad goals, uh, generally speaking with our corp goals, lower the barriers to resources. Transportation is obviously a big issue, um, and having providers in our area is another issue. Same thing with mental health, which kind of coincides with, um, substance use disorder. So also to lessen the stigma attached to addiction. A personal remark I, about why I have an interest in this, my mother was an alcoholic and she also was addicted to painkillers. It ultimately took her life, so, um, and it, it didn't, it didn't take a whole lot for me to say that out loud, but, um, because she was somebody in the community, there are people that were very surprised about that, so I just don't want people to feel weird. It's a part of everyone's life, so, um, also just identifying that and strengthening the local recovery community. So finding family members and individuals who have, are dealing with that, um, just making sure that they know that they have a place and they don't have to hide it. Another part that we did with our campaign for strengthening the recovery community is trying to show people, um, those skills for when they are at Christmas or at Thanksgiving or holidays or the Fourth of July or Kwanzaa or anything of that sort, and they were sitting down with their families that they haven't seen in a while and noticing some of those triggers that they might be having to go, hey, have, you know, and having a number and ha, and letting, and giving them those resources and feeling comfortable instead of trying to hide it. Um, so this is a very neat opportunity that we are doing, uh, able to get through at, um, McCullough Hyde Memorial Hospital. It actually just started about a week ago. It's a peer connection. These are peers that have lived experience in this, so it's not someone that's trained and brought in, um, they, I mean, they are trained, but, uh, they have, they have gone through recovery themselves. And currently, um, McCullough Hyde asked for a female identifying, um, peer connection so that, um, they can go in and talk with the OB department because that also seems to be where the need is in this area, um, and where some potential individuals that could use these resources, um, are being seen. They follow up with them for up to a year, as long as they're willing to engage. And so even in the hospital, when that individual is not comfortable talking with them, they'll still kind of keep talking, um, phone calls, texts later. Uh, it's three days a week in person, and then after that, um, it's got telehealth, um, when, on the days that they can't be there. But that's another point. This is next year, hopefully to step that up to all around. Um, Miami University, we've got Generation RX, which was created by students for students, and it's just educating on, uh, safe medication disposal and locking things up. Um, our HAWKS Peer Educators Group is actually going to be sharing that out to dorms, um, uh, in classes, sometimes Greek life, uh, whoever is requesting this, but getting that information out. And we, this grant supplied funds to do some of the printing and get some of the, um, uh, materials out. Also, the ESPT, um, brief intervention and referral to the treatment. Any student that comes to the Student Health Center can, is going to be screened when they come in there, even for a cough or a cold, um, or a broken leg, they are screened with ESPT. And, um, it just gives you signs and let a clinician know if an individual could use, um, a referral for substance use. Also, um, some of the funding from the grant is provided for the ever so popular Campus Wellness Days, um, and also Drug Take Back Days, which are also happening in our community. So our local programs, oh no, the picture. It had local people in it. That's okay. Um, so picture local people. Um, the city of Oxford, uh, and Oxford Township has been doing local, um, Drug Take Back Days, which are great. Um, and also they have been able to do, um, medication safety presentations in the Knowles, um, the Oxford Senior Center, um, and then there are also medication drop boxes where you can drop off, uh, your old and unused medications at any time. I think it's Miami Police Department, Oxford Police Department, and, uh, the Township Building. Another service that we were able to provide is a free billing and coding training to entice providers to want to provide these services. Sometimes, um, providers are hesitant to take this on because they're not getting the full billing, so we provided a, um, a billing and also bought them books to hopefully pull people into our area. And then as far as the grassroots campaign, we've had a lot of local businesses trying to put money back into the area. Oxford Coffee Shop, we've done Kroger, La Roses, um, uh, Caphenya, DuBois Warehouse, which will also show up, um, on another slide, but we've been really happy with, uh, the response. And then City of Oxford, the Police Department, uh, if people are just kind of taking this on and going, yes, we want to do this. So volunteers, oh, and this one had a lovely picture of Pat Hayesman. It's okay, she's got a smile and she's holding a sign. Um, but we are lucky enough that a lot of members of our consortium are part of other groups in our community, um, which helps with sustainability and knowing that even when this grant funding will ultimately run out at a time, that there are going to be other, um, opportunities because we have people involved in other groups with other, with ears listening in for other grants. And we hopefully have another grant that we're looking at, um, soon here to supplement it and hopefully stretch this out. So this is where the, the meat and potatoes of it is, the harm reduction. And I also threw in a picture of Jessica. Um, so, uh, harm reduction, that is a really neat, um, DuBois Warehouse over on College Corner Pike, which is right across from one of the communities that, um, that can be serviced for these, um, services. It offers, uh, fentanyl testing strips, naloxone, free naloxone, no questions asked, um, and, uh, safer, safer sex supplies, medical referrals, um, hepatitis, uh, C and HIV testing, um, the rapid testing. But that's offered, it was during the wintertime, a little bit more spread out, but now it's every Wednesday from eleven to one. Um, so please, if there is a way to get that shared out to the community, um, even more so, we're trying to let it happen organically, and it did on Facebook, uh, a couple of weeks back, so we were really happy with that. Um, and then TOPPS, we have layperson distributors in the community, and these are just regular people that just have a passion, either they have a personal story like myself, or they, uh, volunteer, um, at TOPPS or the Family Resource Center, and they get, um, signed up with the Butler County General Health District and they can distribute Narcan themselves. Um, we had a beautiful organic, um, uh, just distribution where we got some to a community, a resident of the community was like, they're not going to take it from you because they, they don't know you. They've got the Narcan and they are now distributing it in their community, um, because they're, and they themselves are actually going through the recovery, recovery process. So this is exactly how it was supposed to happen, and it just happened like a couple of days ago. Um, and then the Family Resource Center, uh, we are trying to meet people where they are, so we're trying to partner with events and local businesses to where some of those individuals who are seeking other services so they can have access. Um, I was able to meet with Brad and introduce him to DeCoach, and there might be some services on the docket for him to be meeting with some individuals from DeCoach and potentially creating a partnership there. And DeCoach is a rehabilitation center. Um, let's see. So sub-communities or pocket communities, also like I, I'd like to refer, refer to them as, we have communities here, PVA, Miami Mobile Home Park, that, uh, are communities that could be using these resources along with other places in our town, but just acknowledging that they all have different goals, um, and different ideas of what they want to do with their, um, their communities and within their communities. And we are, um, really good and have great partners at identifying that and, um, getting things done that they want to. And because of that, some of the initiatives that we have brought up or that I have talked about in this presentation, they are deciding to move forward with those as well. Um, local school district, obviously Talawanda, and which is helping us to be a little creative with our four five oh five six, um, because of that being in our corp, um, rural area defined, um, we're finding out that it kind of works at Talawanda with our large school district, that we are finding other ways to get resources out. Um, and then looking ahead, we have a lot of other, um, community trainings and, and ideas to come up to assist the town. If you have ideas, the same thing with the pocket, uh, communities and the sub-communities, please let us know. Um, I am happy to take ideas back to the consortium and share these, and that's the only way that we can continue to grow this. So thank you so very much for having me. Are there any questions?
That was a great presentation. That's really exciting. There's so many tangible things that I want to work in on.
I, I'm curious to know about, um, initiatives that have come from within the communities so far specifically, uh, can you talk a little bit about?
Yes, and Amy, and I didn't even get to talk about like Talawanda School District, so just, yeah, do you want me to talk about with the initiatives in the community with Talawanda or? Okay, um, so, uh, the community, it was, uh, kind of brought to light that, uh, Talawanda needed a, um, was hoping to assess the wellbeing of students and knowing that those growth, um, those things that, uh, let me see what I put on here. Let me apologize. Um, the student wellbeing is, is commonly valued, but is not commonly measured in school districts. So, um, because of this, funds from this grant purchased a survey to capture the wellbeing of, uh, students. And actually, if you have a student in Talawanda, I received this email about four, five days ago, that that survey was being sent out, so we can see where the needs are in, um, and the strengths of each individual student. But those are also tied with mental health and also tied with, um, uh, substance. And, you know, if things are not going well, um, in school or mental health, um, yeah, that they would need that.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
First of all, thank you so much for the work that you all do because it's so important for the community. Um, just thinking about some of the pocket communities, I was wondering if there's anything specific for Miami students but those who live off campus, because I think HAWKS does such an amazing job with students on campus, but I think, you know, the off-campus community still has students who struggle and they may not, they may feel a little bit more cut off from the on-campus services.
And I completely understand that. Um, HAWKS, I know, does, uh, walkabout throughout the community. They do reverse trick-or-treat, um, and which has some interesting stuff in their bags. Um, and, uh, but it's, it's a good point that you make. And in one of the mental health groups, they were even talking about, um, how some students are not wanting to go on campus for services because of it being tied to the university. And that's another reason why we're trying to bring providers to the area and entice individuals to come. So, um, I'll certainly bring, bring that back to Leslie Haxley. Neil.
And then I have one more question. Um, so with kind of the overlap of substance use disorder and, you know, other kind of imp, despair, impact-related things, um, the first thing that came to mind is the overlap with substance use disorder and suicide. Are there referral processes for somebody who may be coming in initially for substance use, but then also has some of these comorbid mental health issues, including, you know, depression, anxiety, suicidality, things like that?
Yes, uh, I'm actually a, uh, a social work program right now at Miami, getting my masters, and I believe that that would be a part of the initial assessment when somebody would be coming in. Um, and I know that Miami is also doing some training in, um, QPR training, yes, yeah. I almost said ESPT and I was like, no, wrong, wrong letters. Um, but yes, there is a huge tie-in with that. Um, and I would hope that when some, someone is coming in, depending on who they're talking to, that they can address that, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much for having me. I appreciate it.
Okay, so now we will move towards the public comments. Anyone wishing to address counsel about items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda, please come forward at this time. And for reporting, if you could make sure you leave your name and address, and you have up to five minutes to speak. And out of courtesy, I will give you, be giving you a fifteen-second warning. Okay, anyone else have more, your public comments? So we will move towards your consent agenda. Does anyone have a motion to have the consent agenda?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Are there any items to be removed? All of them have a proof of consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
All of them? And now removed items. So we'll move towards our first resolution, competitive with these items.
A resolution author. It's supposed to be on, right? Hold please. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, better. A resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the Oxford Community Foundation grant in the amount not to exceed twelve thousand dollars.
Do you have a motion to add?
So moved.
Second.
Anyone from staff, like a former?
Yes, I'll take, uh, the comments. For Casey, he's been excused from tonight's meeting, so what we have here is a, uh, we applied to the Community Foundation, Oxford Community Foundation for a grant, uh, in December of twenty twenty-one, and we, uh, were notified that we were awarded that grant in February of twenty twenty-two. The grant request was for twelve thousand dollars, and these funds will help continue an ongoing project of renovating one large ball field at the Oxford Community Park into three smaller youth-size fields. And this will allow, uh, more games to be played there by Little League and other tournaments such as that. So we're recommending that you adopt this resolution this evening, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Are there any public comments? Any line, making any passing discussion? So you can do a voice, right? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, for the second resolution?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the Ohio Department of Natural Resources grant in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Good evening. Uh, congratulations to Dave Chilavon, our environmental specialist. Uh, he was successful in getting a ten thousand dollar grant from ODNR. So this money is to be used to supplement the urban canopy, tree canopy. We've had losses from climate change and Emerald Ash board, so, uh, this money, which the city will match one for one, will be used to plant a lot more trees this autumn. So we need your permission to receive the funds, so we recommend approval. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any public comments? Same then, council discussion?
Just a question, Mike, into how you distribute the trees. Are these mainly going to be street trees in the tree lawn? Is something that's going to be in the park? How do you decide where they go?
Uh, our first priority will be supplementing the moss where, where we've had loss, and from there, if we have extra funds, uh, we'll go to the park system.
Yeah, this is fantastic, and thanks to David for securing this grant.
Voice, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Any of them? Start a resolution?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a site access agreement with the Owls Landing subdivision developer.
Do you have a motion to add?
So moved.
Second.
So the city's been working with the developer at Owl's Landing, and we require, uh, two easements along Brookville Road for the construction of the Oaks Trail. And this has been a complicated procedure based on the sale and the closing date from the prior owners to Todd Holmes. Uh, so this resolution, which goes hand in hand with, uh, ordinance number three on first reading, uh, allows the city to work with the developer to obtain these two easements that are necessary for the Oaks Trail, and it helps protect the interests of Todd Holmes by working with the city to allow for utilities and roadway connections and things of that nature, uh, where we are acquiring these easements. So, uh, this is a synergistic sit, situation where, uh, we both, both parties have to work together. Uh, we need to do this by March twenty-fifth so that we can certify our right-of-way and easement acquisition to ODOT. Uh, they won't review final plans until, uh, we complete that step. So when we get to the ordinances, uh, you'll notice that, uh, we do request that be an emergency so that it becomes effective after the second reading immediately, and that way we'll meet our deadline with ODOT. So I'll be glad to answer questions.
Any public comments? Same then, council discussion?
Can you just clarify for me, Mike, that ordinances are actually accepting the easement, but this resolution is to develop an agreement so that the developer can enter in upon that easement?
Yes.
While they're under construction?
Yes, it protects both parties' interests and, um, it gives the city manager and law director the ability to, uh, negotiate this agreement with Todd Holmes.
And this is just for along Brookville Road? There was, there's a spur of the trail that was planned for the center of the development. This doesn't predate that?
No, it's just for the easements along Brookville.
If I could add, this is really a timing issue. The closing between the developer and the sellers was yesterday. The, that had, that transferred, real estate transfer has not been recorded yet, so we can't get the easement in the city's name and record it until the developer actually owns the property. So it's a timing issue. So we expect that the, the property will have been transferred into Todd Hall's LLC or whatever entity has decided to transfer the property for the purpose of development. Then when we come back for the emergency approval, we will know the transfer's been done, and then we can record before that deadline on March twenty-fifth. Simply ties, Mike said he did a great job of summarizing. It's a timing issue. Uh, the developer has been very, very easy to work with on this towards his common goal because there's kind of been some fits and starts all related to the, the timing and the closing of the real estate sale.
Well, I just want to express my gratitude, if you could convey it to him and to all certain you guys were working with him, because our ability to do the trail and accept our grant is conditioned upon the ability to have, I mean, a lot of moving parts that have to come together for this trail, and we can't take that for granted with property owners. Um, so I'm really appreciative of the developer, and you guys have been able to be creative. So, because I look forward to this trail segment coming this, under construction this summer, right? If we meet our deadline, okay.
Uh, there, there are a lot of floating pieces still. We need ODOT approval, and there's, there's a lot of things beyond our control before we are allowed to go out for bid. This is another step of progress.
Okay.
Aye.
Any opposed? The words are ordinances and our first reading. For the first, first, first reading.
An ordinance approving the final subdivision application and plat for South Forest Edge, Section Two, with conditions.
So we have some comments?
Good evening. Thank you. There it is. All right. Uh, so you've seen this before. You may remember last April, uh, the South Forest Edge and Lake Forest Drive, the twenty-one lot, uh, planned development. So the distinction with that, that was the plan. This is the plat, so that the, the land can't be divided and recorded and sold, um, unless this plat is allowed to be, uh, approved and recorded. It can't be approved and recorded, it can't be recorded unless, um, all of the bonds and the documentation, which hasn't been done yet. But this step would allow the developer to proceed with those documentations, which are in the staff report, uh, the financial instrument to secure the public improvements and those types of things. So, uh, Lake Forest Drive, uh, on twenty-seven South, uh, is where this is located, and there's twenty-one lots for single-family development and a new twenty-eight-foot wide street. Uh, so you may remember there was discussion about connectivity to the east and the rural area, those, those kinds of things. and the rural area, those, those kinds of things. If you were part of that discussion. So this is just for dividing the land on a plan that has already been approved. So it's essentially an administrative function. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any public comments? Same then, council discussion?
Can you help me understand this? Sam, so we approved the preliminary and it was a subdivision, right? And so this is the final subdivision. But typically, does it not have, like typically, we have decision standards that mean it conforms with the preliminary, but this is even more pro forma than that. So is this the final subdivision approval? And basically, was it reviewed administratively in those standards?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Because this was, frankly, a simple sort of report here.
Yep.
Because it complies with the conditions in the preliminary?
There was, there was actually, this is part of a fifty-three acre parcel. There's more land to the north. So this is seventeen acres of the fifty-three for that final plat.
Okay. So, but after this, they're good to go? And other than the other administrative approvals that need to happen?
Yeah, there's, there's some more documentation that has to be done, but that can be all handled administratively.
And this didn't need to come before the planning commission? Is that, or code allows it direct back to council?
Correct. Because it's consistent with the previously approved plan. There's not a need for that planning commission step.
Thank you.
Good question.
This is the first reading. We will not be voting on it. We'll see it next time. So for the second first reading?
An ordinance accepting the recommendation of the planning commission and approving the final plan development application to allow for further commercial development on an eleven point two eight acre site incorporating the Mayday Gun Range to contain a new business incubator and storage facility with conditions.
All right, I'm back. So you may remember this project in the past, the Mayday Gun Range. So there was a preliminary plan that came through council. This is the final for phase one. So not for the complete expansion of it. So this, this slide just shows the location of it. It's an unusually shaped site. It has two very narrow frontages, eleven acre site. So it touches Ringwood Road by about fifty feet and Twenty-seven North around thirty to forty feet. So that's a little bit unusual. But it is an industrially zoned site and an opportunity for some non-residential development. We don't see that too often. So we're excited about the possibility there for some, some development, potentially some job creation in the future. And the, the plan for the phase one is to develop in the area that's to the south. And I'll show you on another slide, the actual plan itself. And the portions closer to Twenty-seven are undetermined at this point, but there's a general layout of what that would look like. You may remember some of that discussion before. So in this slide, you can see the gun range that's existing and then some additional development around it. That would be part of phase one. And then the parts that are to the, closer to Twenty-seven, those, those actual details are undetermined at this, at this point. So those would be future phases. The developers aren't sure whether they would be single phases or additional phases or if one tenant would want the remainder of the site all at once, which would, would be acceptable as well. So business incubator or storage use. And there are, I think, up to seven tenants in the business incubator space. You may remember that discussion. A little bit of outdoor RV storage along the railroad tracks. The bulk of the discussion at the planning commission actually had to do with connectivity for pedestrian, connectivity to Twenty-seven. And staff had a recommendation for that. And then the planning commission kind of discussed that a little bit too. Just because of the unknown nature of how this area would develop and whether it was even reasonable to design something that would connect to Twenty-seven and then have to remove it later. So the consensus was to actually require the connection up to Ringwood Road, which was not part of the original approval of the Mayday Gun Range. And also add some contribution for connectivity from that driveway to Twenty-seven as well. And so because we weren't really prepared for the, kind of that detail when that meeting, we kind of reworded that condition again to give it a little bit more detail. So that's what ended up in the staff report and recommendation and the ordinance that was drafted. So that's a, kind of a long circuitous way to say that we think it's pretty close to what the planning commission wanted. Obviously, the applicant can, can speak to that as well. And happy to answer any questions you might have. There's a lot of unknown in the future there with, with the future phases might be. But we'd like to help get the applicant to a point where they can start doing some additional development around the gun range.
Any public comments? Are there just, can I like to think of them?
Okay. Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of council. It's my first time in front of the new council. So glad to be here to present this project this evening. I was honestly expecting a little more detail from staff. We've been through quite a process over the last couple of years trying to get this thing developed. So I'd like to maybe take a minute and kind of get a little big picture here for benefit of some of the new council members. This is eleven point two acres. It represents eleven of the fifteen undeveloped acres that the city has in the light industrial district. So this is the lion's share of the opportunity to create jobs. Because of the odd shape of the land, this is a panhandle lot. The only opportunity to do any more development in this site is through a plan development. And that's what's brought us here to council this evening. Being a plan development, that also means that everything is on the, on the developer's ticket, so to speak. So all the streets that are being constructed here are private. The sidewalks are private. All the utilities are private. Not just from a construction standpoint, but for a long-term maintenance standpoint, they'll be responsible for their snow removal, all of this sort of stuff. So it represents a pretty big investment in the city to do this. And we've taken a couple of years in getting here. We started a couple of years back with a very similar plan, kind of an internal loop road. We came to planning commission for a concept review. The fire department spoke up and said they really wanted to have a second access point to this property. We went back to the drawing board. As Sam pointed out, we have a little frontage there on US Twenty-seven. Seemed to be the, the way to provide the second way access to this development. We presented that to staff. Engineering decided that really wasn't a good idea. So that one didn't make it to planning commission. That got scrapped. So we came back again, this time with the loop road. We've since negotiated with the church, kind of to the north here. As you see, there's a little spot that we've arranged that we could get a fire truck to go from the church's parking lot onto our property to provide that second means of, of access that the fire department was interested in. Also, as we were in the process of round three here, it came to light from staff that the city is looking for a future collector road in this area that would require a hundred feet of right-of-way. You can see just to the south of this property, there's a very narrow sixty-foot wide parcel that goes from US Twenty-seven to the railroad tracks. Our offer was, how about we'll, you get sixty feet from that person. We'll offer you forty feet of the south side of this property. So now you have your potential hundred feet. Keep in mind that the city's not interested in buying this forty feet at this point, you know, as an easement, as a public right-of-way. Just sort of on the, on the goodness of the developer, we've decided to sort of just stay away from that. So if you do want to come back and buy this sometime in the future for this collector road, then that's available also. So that was another thing that we've incorporated in here. So when the gun range was developed, there was no sidewalk ordinance in the city. It was determined by planning commission and city council at the time that a sidewalk to Ringwood Road would probably go nowhere. They really didn't see a huge need for sidewalk to serve as the gun range. But when we made it to planning commission for our first actual preliminary, in the meantime, in the year or so that it passed, the city passed the sidewalk ordinance, the complete streets program so that connectivity is, is key for planning commission right now. Okay. So when we came to planning commission for the preliminary, the staff report suggested that we provide a sidewalk kind of at the end of the little panhandle, so to speak, that fifty-foot right-of-way. That's typical, you know, even if you're the first, someone has to be the first sidewalk, right? So the idea was, okay, let's put the sidewalk along Ringwood Road and we'll proceed from there. Planning commission was less enthused about that and went beyond staff's recommendation and suggested that actually a pedestrian connection to US Twenty-seven would be really important. So back to the drawing board, we went again and worked out a way to do that. Some of you may recall the ones that were on council when I was here last time with the preliminary, that this is a bridge that we're talking about to connect a sidewalk to US Twenty-seven. We have a Bear Becker here who's done the engineering of the site. If you've been out by there, you see the entire site slopes toward US Twenty-seven. It's about twelve feet. US Twenty-seven is about twelve feet in the air from the ditch on that side. Results in about a seventy-five foot bridge, twelve feet in the air. It's unbelievably expensive. Again, to my earlier point, everything in this development is private. It's not public. My clients simply do not want to build or own or insure a seventy-five foot bridge over this ditch on US Twenty-seven. So when we went to city council, they were not, you, so to speak, were not thrilled with the idea of, of not doing the bridge. So in discussion at planning commission last time, I think it was Dr. Prithric who suggested that, you know, I made the pitch that maybe we could at least push this down to phase two. My clients are coming in here bearing the entire burden of this, not just to prepare the development for construction, but are actually going to be the first two businesses in the development. So this is a huge investment for them. And we simply asked planning commission, okay, if you're not going to let go of this bridge, could we at least kick this can down the road a little bit to phase two so that, you know, we have an opportunity to recover some of the investment that they've made thus far? Seemed like that started to go well. And then, then planning commission pointed out that sometimes phase two never happens. And so what happens if phase two never happens? Then we never get our sidewalk. So they kicked around the idea of, well, maybe we could put a sunset on that if phase two isn't developed within three to five years, you have to build the bridge anyway. Conversation moved around back toward phase one and the notion that since we don't know what the rest of this development is going to look like, this could be three or four buildings. It'd be great if we could have one big employer take the whole thing. We simply don't know at this point. So we'd like to, you know, not do the bridge. So the discussion then centered on, well, what if we ran a sidewalk along the entrance drive to the gun range? Currently doesn't have a sidewalk there. You recall it wasn't required by planning or council at the time. Now it is. So we said, well, how about we go out that way? And then we could work our way back. There's one empty lot kind of adjacent to the panhandle. And then there's the church on the corner. Perhaps we could make our way around that direction instead. I spoke on behalf of my clients and said, you know, we, we came into this meeting expecting that we were going to build one sidewalk. We'd candidly much rather build it on flat ground. Rather own one on flat ground than opposed to a bridge. So, okay, we'll, we'll look at taking it out Ringwood Road. And so that's sort of where we left planning commission. Now, since then, the staff report and the ordinance that you have in front of you tonight is a little bit different than that. The ordinance tonight says that, yes, you have to build the sidewalk along Ringwood Road, up to Ringwood Road in phase one. That was expected. Staff has come up with something called a proportionate impact, which I don't think is something that actually exists in our code or anywhere. I don't know how you would determine a proportionate impact that this development would have on the need for a sidewalk here. So I'm a little concerned about the language there. You know, an ordinance will be binding upon my clients. And it's using a term that simply is unknown. We have no idea what you mean by proportionate impact. The standard, as I'm sure you all know, is you pay proportionately based on your frontage, in most cases in the city. So perhaps the fifty-foot frontage isn't really enough sidewalk for eleven acres here. But nonetheless, I think kind of creating a new methodology on the fly of proportionate impact to be borne by the developer for this is a, is a bit of a blind guess for us at this point. And then lastly, the last part of your ordinance says, okay, even if you do put the sidewalk along Ringwood Road and you agree to pay the proportionate impact fee for running the sidewalk on Ringwood Road down to US Twenty-seven, you still might have to do the bridge in a later phase. It's just simply too much. We have been working with the city for two years now on this. And each time we come, the goalposts just keep getting moved farther and farther away. And the notion of trying to do two sidewalks that include a bridge for a storage facility, it's just more than the project simply can bear. Like clients are here this evening to say that if all of this is the ordinance and this comes in, you know, we're just going to withdraw the project. It's just simply not feasible to do absolutely everything that you've asked us to do over the course of the last two years. Not two sidewalks, not the bridge. We left planning commission saying we would consider the Ringwood Road access. The code actually says to provide pedestrian connectivity. Doesn't say we have to do it two times. We have to do it to every road that we touch. We would just like your consideration on revising some of the wording in the ordinance to be a little more fair to the investment that my clients are making here to try to develop this property and provide some jobs for the city.
Thank you. Any public comments? Council discussion?
So I think that the language constructed by staff reflects the conversation in the planning commission. In part because unless I'm mistaken, what we're asked to review is just phase one. I mean, the rest of them are light lines on phase two. We don't know what's going to happen there and we really haven't yet. So phase two is phase two and that's really not before us. Phase one is what's in front of us. And I think that, I mean, I will say back in general that it's, I think the council's really supportive of this development of some non-residential uses. It may not be the job generator we hope for. Much of it is storage units. But it's economic development. But it will generate traffic. It will generate automobile traffic, other forms of traffic. And so I think our codes and our standards kind of insist that this has pedestrian connectivity. Ringwood Road is now part of the city of Oxford. It's a city street. We're committed to pedestrian connectivity. What we concluded is, A, that a sidewalk connection really should be made to Ringwood Road no matter what. And the idea of proportionality is actually kind of a legal standard. Like when you, when you talk about things like developments that generate on and off-site impacts, that, that the developer, it's called an exaction, that the developer should be proportionally responsible for what those off-site impacts were. If this development were going to all of a sudden overload the intersection of Ringwood Road, that upgrading the signal might be the matter of negotiation between the city and, and the developer because the public shouldn't bear the cost. So they have, we're talking about a sidewalk connection of Ringwood Road and then some proportion. And I think that's a matter of negotiation. But I think the developer and, and the city are capable of negotiating what would be a fair. And if it's unfair, they could come to the courts and say it was unfair. So I think there will be a rationale for what, what's proportional. As for what happens with phase two, I think, I don't think, this is just phase one. And to ask for our language to bind us as to what happens in phase two, just, I think it ties the hands of the future council planning commission. So the language just basically commits to what the planning commission said and, and doesn't bind the future council in determining what the solution is. Is that about right, Mr. Perry? So I don't think we're saying what's going to happen there. Has it been engineered? That could be, but they're just dotted lines on a map now. So I, I don't think we can prejudice what those conversations are. So I appreciate all the back and forth. I think this is going to be a good industrial development. And I think it should provide a sidewalk connection. As for what happens in phase two, we can talk about that later. You can carry on with all that.
Hey Scott, what's your ideal situation with, let's just say, if you were able to? Hey Scott, what's your ideal situation with, uh, let's just say if you were able to edit this ordinance, what would you want it to read? Or what would your, uh, uh, client want it to read?
So, Dr. Perthric is correct. We are just here for phase one and I try to, you know, acknowledge the notion of, what if phase two never happens? Maybe we don't get the sidewalk. We frankly thought we left the meeting saying, okay, well, let's just do our connectivity in phase one and then we don't have to worry about a sunset. We don't have to worry about phase two. We don't have to own a bridge. Let's just do it this way instead. The language currently says, you gotta potentially do both and, and there's, you know, there, this is one planned development. We are coming through with our engineering approval and, as you know, final developments are primarily, uh, engineering exercises, you know, as long as we don't change any of the concepts that we presented to you from a design standpoint. So, I would like you to go back to considering this as an entire development and this entire development is providing pedestrian connectivity to Ringwood Road. We're meeting the code requirement to provide pedestrian connectivity. Um, the language that says, you know, you may have to do it a second time is the part that we are unhappy with. That even if we spend all the money to, you know, build this entire sidewalk in phase one, um, you know, and take on all the debt and all the construction, everything else of phase one, only to find out we're gonna be surprised by a hundred thousand dollar bridge in phase two, you know, if we're, if we're going to provide one, we would prefer to do it now. We think it meets both the intent of the zoning code and the direction of Planning Commission in that let's make sure it happens in phase one, so we know we're gonna get our sidewalk. Um, so we would just simply like to have the second part of the ordinance where staff specifically says the construction of this sidewalk does not include that you may still have to do another one in, in phase two.
Well, um, so I, I hear a lot of frustration. Uh, I'm just wondering the extent to which this process is typical or atypical of other developments that might happen over the course of a couple of years. I mean, it sounds like there were some changes in, in city values over the time, complete streets, those types of things. Is this unusual, um, in terms of changes? Pretty typical? Just some history if possible?
Most of the developments we have have a lot more frontage and there's a, there's already kind of a, a design in place for how the right of way is going to be improved. But as David, uh, referred to, it's kind of, I, I, I think maybe you said something about a rural road that had been kind of expanded into and I think that's what the challenge here is, is it is unusual, so there's not really a lot of precedent for this. Um, and to respond to, uh, Mr. Webb's statement about, um, kind of preventing them from having to do a second connection, I think that concern from staff rises out of the fact that a preliminary plan or a final plan actually would, would say what is going to happen. Uh, this, this project doesn't have the rest of that. So, if, to Glenn's comment, if, uh, you wanted to entertain the idea of not having them required to do that second connection, we could write it to, to say just the opposite. It will not be required in the future. That's not a problem. But that would be assuming that the development that happens in phase two or three or four or whatever, uh, would not generate any need for that connection. So, um, so the short answer is there's not really a precedent for this kind of project. The closest thing we would have would be, uh, smaller scale commercial developments where all of the frontage is directly on the street. Uh, some recent restaurant projects or commercial developments where if there's not a public sidewalk, they just build it right along their frontage. In this case, because of the level of unknown and the fact that it is a planned development, Planning Commission felt that and I think the code would support that, there would be a determination of connectivity based on recent policy. Um, and I think this typically what staff would do is negotiate that outside of the public forum. Uh, we did attempt to do that. Uh, obviously that didn't happen and, and that's okay. And so now you kind of have to weigh that. Uh, so, uh, we can take the feedback from, from those of you that have spoken and from Mr. Webb and, and try it again between the, uh, first and second reading and see if we can come up with something that's, that's reasonable. So, if you all wanna kind of go around and weigh in on what you think is, is fair, that's fine and that will help us, uh, as we negotiate.
So, you know, yes, in fact, we don't know what's gonna happen in phase two in terms of users, but we do know what's gonna happen in phase two in terms of land. And we presented at Planning Commission, uh, last month that in order to build phase one, we have to grade and design and put utilities in the entire site. The retention basin is at the low point of the site up against US twenty seven. That's not gonna move. The ditch isn't gonna move. No matter what we put in phase two, whether it's one building or three buildings, the bridge is not gonna change. The retention is not gonna change. The retention has been designed for the entire development and has to be constructed in the first phase. So, the place up here in the corner where we're gonna walk along the dam of the retention basin until you get to a bridge to get to twenty seven, isn't gonna change in phase two. It, it has to be constructed in phase one, the retention pond for the entire development. So, it's not like phase two is gonna change the problem of the bridge down the road. It's still gonna be a bridge. The ditch is still there. Um, so, so yes, we don't know who the users are, but we do know the topography. We do know the challenge.
Well, they said they're gonna commit the forty feet that is adjacent to the sixty feet that is, I don't know who knows that, but if we have to annex that, or not annex that, I'm sorry, uh, what is that called? Thank you. Uh, appropriated. If they're willing to commit to that in writing somewhere, maybe as part of this ordinance, because then, complete streets would have to, uh, apply to that particular street, which means there would be a sidewalk there. That would satisfy those conditions indefinitely in the future, should we choose to do that. I don't wanna see an economic development project stalled because of a sidewalk. Now, at the same time, I do understand that we have to have, uh, multimodal transportation and once we do this one time, it's gonna sit in there and that's gonna be it. Uh, so, I think the Ringwood thing needs to happen. So, like, the Ringwood sidewalk definitely needs to happen. Uh, regarding the, what was it, impact type of thing, that, that's a question mark because I know that that has been conceptualized, but I don't believe it's ever been used as a precedent. Uh, and I don't want something that's unprecedented, um, hinging on a, uh, project happening or not happening. Like, I would rather do hypothetical things on something that, you know, will definitely happen. So, like, tho- those are the three things that I'm thinking about here is like, if they commit to making sure that that forty feet is always there and they do the sidewalk up to where they said they were gonna do that sidewalk according to how our complete streets, uh, policy is laid out, I'm okay with this because it's just phase one that we're considering right now. And I don't want to mire a project in hypotheticals in the future now knowing, uh, additional information that I don't remember talking about before. Like, I don't think we talked about a twelve-foot chasm, uh, regarding that sidewalk the last time we were discussing sidewalk and egress and other things like that.
So, I think, for me, the Ringwood Road sidewalk, yes, makes a ton of sense. And the, the conditionals are, I can definitely see the concern here of what could this become down the road since it's conditional and we, there are a lot of question marks about phase two. But to me, because there are so many question marks about what's upcoming, taking that out feels like we're closing a door instead of keeping it open to options. Uh, and I guess my question would be, does this conditional clause in here, um, does that facilitate a conversation? Would that ever come back to council if something bubbles up that we need for that provisional impact? Okay. So, I think if we get a chance to have it as a conversation and not just a do this, then I'm okay with it in the sense that I just, there's so many question marks about what phase two. It may not even just be a phase two, but a three or a four. And let's say the RV store, it works amazingly and then we have to put a, a stoplight at Ringwood or something like that. You know, I think keeping that door open to those future conversations would work.
What's the worst-case scenario from the city's perspective? If, if we said, um, you know, we'll take out all those other contingencies, then what, what's the worst situation that we would face?
So, thinking of, uh, pedestrian connectivity maybe, um, or even vehicular traffic, I think the main point for these kinds of, of reviews is determine what potential public costs could be mitigated by making sure that the development is bearing those costs. And so, it's hard to anticipate what a worst-case scenario would be without knowing what the full build-out would be. But just to try to understand, um, a future cost on a public improvement, maybe it's a traffic signal, maybe it's an extra turn lane, uh, maybe it's a, a road widening. Uh, Ringwood Road is, is, is a rural road. There's not really a shoulder. Um, it's not really designed for urban activity with, you know, streetlights, street trees, sidewalks, those kinds of things. So, so if that became a desire of the community to have it more of an urbanized roadway, then that cost probably should have been predicted through the process of this development. But Ringwood Road is, in its, in a way, already been partially developed. So, some of that is already kind of set. Um, so, a worst-case scenario is, is really looking at what a future capital improvement, when you do a review on the budget and you're looking at those capital improvement costs, we don't know what that's gonna look like in ten or twenty years. Uh, so I think to, uh, Counseler Ellery's question is, is the, the risk of losing out on economic development worth, you know, not having, uh, this happen because of additional costs? And so, there's a degree of trust that has to be placed in the testimony to see that, okay, this, this may not work out. And so, that's really where you have to weigh those, weigh those goals. So, I hope that helps a little bit, but it's really the public infrastructure, I think, is where it would affect the community the most, the general fund, that type of thing.
Can I just, um, and I think the narrative here has gotten it somewhat backwards from the way the Planning Commission, when presented with this really expensive engineering solution to go directly to twenty seven, we were highly sympathetic to the developer. It felt like that was an awfully expensive way to solve the pedestrian connection. And so, the idea of going to Ringwood Road, um, was in great sympathy to that, wow, that's, we have a goal pedestrian connectivity, but if it requires a link and bridge, then so we, some of this back and forth is a back and forth of trying to meet the developer in, in the middle. Um, and while we're asking the developer to bear proportional costs, because should the city provide a sidewalk to connect a new development? If the development generates the need for the sidewalk, well, we'll meet them in the middle. I mean, I think literally we'll find a way to pay for half and they'll pay for half, or whatever that proportionality is. Um, so I think that we were, uh, trying to see that this development went forward and, and release them of some burdens. Um, as for the, what I think, and Counselor French really just summarized our thought, there's so many uncertainties, including the fact that there's a right of way to the south of this property that could become a roadway in the future. So, I really, I appreciate all the engineering that went into the bridge, but this, this ordinance doesn't talk anything about a bridge. It talks about providing sidewalk connectivity to phase one. As for what happens in phase two will be, and it, we'll go through this whole conversation over again, uh, starting with administrative and the Planning Commission and coming here and these conversations will happen then. And if, and if that council at that time decides that a connection directly to twenty seven is infeasible or undesirable, that could be a decision that council or planning commission makes. Uh, so, but I don't wanna prejudice or tie, tie those hands in the future. It's a, I think this is a good development. I think the gun range should have had a sidewalk connection back when. We've been struggling with Ringwood Road for a while about whether we should, how we get there. But I think a partnership will enable us to build the infrastructure to meet this is new urban development and create needs. So, so, so again, supportive. I hope you view this, that this has been not like, yeah, we're trying to meet the development in the middle.
I think this is even nicer. So, I don't know. I agree with everything to this side. Um, I mean, yeah, it's not about the bridge and in fact, if we could have proportional coverage of the sidewalk that connects to twenty seven, which already has, we could do a sidewalk right there. I'd imagine we'd be pretty involved in that. And proportionality makes sense because it has a very low percentage front of it, but has, depending on how you divide it out, sixty, seventy plus percentage of the land and that in terms of people coming in, it could be much, much larger. Um, so, yeah, it's felt spirit as, as simply to, uh, a public obligation and there's, uh, a, a, uh, so, I, I think this should be, it will be a workout negotiations wise. Um, and I think there's more often than not, the bridge will.
So, question, you both mentioned it, the, if I'm reading this correctly, the newly proposed, uh, point five here does on the second page mention, um, it's part of future phase of the business park development by way of constructing an additional walkway and/or bridge in the northeastern corner of the site to connect to the US twenty seven sidewalk. So, the, the work bridge is still in it. Is that some, like, Sam, is that something that we consider making that more vague at minimum?
Yeah, I mean, it seemed like an option that was proposed at one point and then I thought we were very sympathetic too. We were working on all these other options, you know, further, um, development. Uh, but yeah, I think preferred would be sidewalk.
Yeah. So, I mean, I don't know what, if, if one could remove, and I don't, I could make this as a motion, that well, could remove walkway and/or bridge and just say pedestrian, direct for a pedestrian connection. And again, that's not prejudicing future conversations as to how that needs to be engineered.
So, as I said, this isn't a mystery. I mean, we've done the survey. We know the topography. This isn't really gonna change. And, and just, a- as a last point and then I'll, I'll be done for the seat and thank you. But, but I appreciated at Planning Commission, when Planning Commission seemed like they understood the expense of the bridge and said, let's look at this other option instead, the ordinance came out, not that you saved us any money, but we might have to do both. That's the problem. That, that is not empathetic toward the cost. You just added cost. You didn't, you didn't allow us an option to substitute. We ended up with both, the way the ordinance is written.
Is, but Scott, is this the entire, are we reviewing the entire phase or are we reviewing one phase of the plan?
Well, you are, you are doing the final engineering revision of this.
Of, of, of one phase and phase two is in the future.
Sure.
And that's, so I don't think you've been obliged to do anything, uh, is my, my interpretation. I think it's, it can't be one or the other. It can't be this is the entire PUD or it's a phase. It's, it's one or the two. And, and it's good to have the big picture, but I think right now, the only thing that this approves or that's hard dotted, the hard lines of phase one is, and legally is that right, Mr. Perry? I mean, phase two is subject for future conversation.
I mean, I'm sure the client wants security going forward, but we as a city can't lock ourselves into not fulfilling our rules and code. So, either way, one of us is sort of, uh, you know, has our options, uh, limited, or at least there's some unknown. But, you know, we're good faith actors. We're not gonna suddenly build, be like, build all the sidewalk and a bridge and then add something else. We're gonna be reasonable about this, I feel it's happening. And right now, we're on phase one.
I would agree with Mrs., Miss, Miss or Mrs., I'm not sure. Counselor French's amendment, because I don't think that we necessarily have to have that specificity in that. So, that would allow a lot more flexibility. And it's, we're just really worried about, like, the end goal here is to make sure that there is some sort of pedestrian way to get to this facility. Doesn't necessarily need to be a bridge, doesn't necessarily need to be a sidewalk that goes that way. We just want something that pedestrians can get to where they need to. Now, it brings up another concern for me. I wanna make sure that the city has that availability for that land in case we do wanna build that road. So, I would like to see something in there that says, if you guys are going to commit to that, commit to it in writing, so that we have. Now, I understand good faith, but there have been several times that I've sat up here where people have come up in here in good faith and then completely reversed their course and I don't like seeing that. So, now I ask for those types of things that are in good faith to be in writing. So, for your consideration between now and second reading. So, for your consideration between now and second reading.
Does that give you an update on this? Okay, good. We did our job. All right, so for our third first reading.
An emergency ordinance accepting easements necessary for the construction of phase four of the Oxford area trail system.
So again, this ties with resolution number three, and it is an emergency, so that we can make it effective upon your approval on March fifteenth.
So moved.
Pardon me.
Second.
Nothing further, Your Honor?
I just think we normally have to do stuff, but thank you for moving it. Um, okay, so are there any public comments? Same non-council discussion? Doesn't look like any, so let's go on to our fourth first reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-six fifty-four supplemental budget, budget ordinance number three to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two.
Uh, yes, uh, this is, piggybacks on the, uh, resolution accepting the twelve thousand dollar grant from the Community Foundation. And also, Casey is also able to get a sixty-five hundred from the Rotary Club, and five thousand of that will go towards the athletic field renovations, and fifteen hundred will go to, uh, they have this trailer out there that they used to use for concessions. And they're going to, uh, help, and they are looking to have mobile camp opportunities for the community. So this would help retrofit that trailer to accommodate those goals. So on the, um, revenue side, the fifteen hundred will go into the capital equipment fund, and seventeen thousand will go into the capital improvement fund. And then on the expenditure side, there's fifteen hundred in the capital equipment fund, and the seventeen thousand in the capital improvement fund. And these are one of those good ones where money comes in and it covers an expense, so we're not spending extra city money. Plus, it helps the athletic field to get done in a quicker timeframe than is possible because of constraints on how much money the city can spend each year.
Thank you. Any public comments? Council discussion? Same words. Now, we have no second reading, so we'll leave the announcement and communication to the manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, just a few quick things, if I could, please. Uh, I did speak to Mike Everett this afternoon concerning the hospital, and as I'm sure you probably guessed, um, they're back to normals, I said the last time. Uh, he did state this afternoon they had two pending patients, one asymptomatic and one possibly suspected. But when I spoke to him, they did not have any current positive cases in the hospital. Of course, as we all know, in Ohio, the average number of new COVID-nineteen cases per day for this week dropped to just over a thousand from a high six weeks ago, twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty. So that's good news for our state, and we hope that trend continues. And then a couple of other notices. I just want to remind you all that we have our council retreat Friday, March eleventh, uh, from twelve to five at Houston Woods. And our Assistant City Manager, Jessica Green, will be facilitating that for us. And then also, we are expecting, as I believe I mentioned at the last council meeting, that our sister city will have some local government representatives from our sister city, Diverdange, Luxembourg, here, uh, April first through the sixth, probably more like the fourth through the sixth, because I think they're going to do some sightseeing in Ohio on Friday and Saturday, and then they'll join us here in Oxford on Sunday, and they'll be leaving Wednesday morning. So we're going to put together a, uh, schedule along with Miami University, and I'll keep you all posted on that. And I hope you can join us. That's all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
I just, uh, thank you for your patience tonight. We shared this building with, uh, the area court and several other groups, and so we're not always in control of our own electronics. So I apologize that one of the mics was dead this evening, and, uh, thanks Heather for tolerating that and using an alternate. Thank you.
Okay, John?
Thank you.
Mr. Yuric?
Thank you.
I was calling, I, uh, Mr. Perry? Ms. Green?
Good evening. I just want to give you a brief update on our outreach for public input on the comprehensive plan. So we have moved our second public input meeting from the twenty-first to the eighteenth because of a conflict with the school board. So we've moved it to April eighteenth, and we'll start shouting that from, you know, the rooftops here pretty quickly. But I also want to let you know that we are taking great efforts to reach out to what I'm, um, calling like, just making sure that we hear every voice. And so we are doing a few focus groups with minority and women-owned business owners, with individuals who are low to moderate income, and also with, um, our large employers. And so we're doing invitations to focus groups for those individuals, trying to kind of make sure we hear those voices. We will be doing a social campaign for an online survey, and we're going to ask people to please enter those surveys and, and paper versions. Yep. So it's going to be online, postcards around town, and there's also paper versions. And we're going to be accepting those through March twenty-fifth. And what that allows for is time for our consultants to analyze the data that's come in, come back to the steering committee, um, with what they're hearing, and then again, back to the full public on April eighteenth. And at that April eighteenth, I like to think of it as a funnel, so we have all these ideas and information coming in. And then MKSK is going to interpret that and say, well, well, this is what we could do. Here's some things that we could possibly respond to. Here are some ideas. And that's the next phase, and, you know, at that public input session, people will say, cool, that's awesome, or no, you got it wrong, you know? And so it's a feedback loop, but I want people to know that I want you to stay engaged through every process to make sure that we're hearing things correctly and, um, responding correctly. So I just wanted to give you that update the evening, um, this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Barbie?
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Duncan Aron?
Good evening, Council. Uh, as you know, I typically don't talk, but, uh, there's, uh, there's something I want to bring to the attention of Council. Uh, so, uh, at this level, the, where we are in the, the development of the Oats Trail with the eventual goal of connectivity, as you know, this is not, this is a marathon. It's going to take a while raising the money, and the, the progress has been really good. But one of the reasons why it was able to go as smoothly as it did is because it was all public land. We're now in the, in the, the process, as the trail continues to move forward, that it will require some form of acquisition of interest in private property. Uh, in this dealing with the site access agreement and, and dealing with private property owners there, that the question continually comes up is what liability exposure, uh, does the private property owner have? Um, if they won't sell the property, but they simply would rather go the easement route. These people, you know, they, they feel connected to their land, and they, and they don't want to just sell it outright, and, and we'd have to subdivide and do some other things. But the bottom line is, from a city's perspective, we would rather just buy the land. But some property owners aren't comfortable doing that. So I want to point this out. Uh, the Ohio Revised Code fifteen thirty-three point one-eight-one, fifteen thirty-three point one-eight-one, makes it very clear that land that is designated for recreational users gives immunity to the property owner. Um, that is a question that, that continually will come up. Uh, you may be asked that question, and I want you to have that information, so that if you are asked, you can give those answers. Um, the other thing that I will say is, is that, um, the, there are three options to acquire the interest. Uh, it would be easement, purchase, and, and if you had to, you could get to the appropriation point, which nobody wants to do. Um, this is going to be, uh, if I had to guess, I would say it's going to be at least another decade to get through this. Again, many of you probably won't be on council as this continues. But the more we can educate the public as to what the liability exposures are, address those concerns. And in fact, in the easement draft in there, we specifically, I, I drafted a blank which that included reference to that statute in there to allay any property owners' concerns about that. Thank you.
Have you Marty Grob, everybody? That's good for me.
Nothing for me.
Today is the first day of Women's History Month, and I just want to thank all of the women who are leaders in our community.
So, um, in that? No, it's nice to have a nice chair for Raghu, uh, as Mike and I are group, I'm sharing the meeting. Um, I just wanted to thank, uh, everyone who participated in the Oxford tomorrow meetings on Zoom. It was unfortunate it was on Zoom, but ultimately, I think that meant we were able to reach a lot of people, a hundred and fifty or so people. Um, and if you participated, they were actively engaged. A hundred and fifty really actively engaged people. And why that was so wonderful is that in a town of our size, a hundred and fifty is a pretty decent sample size. You know, it's not everybody, but we reached a lot of people. And B, the themes that sometimes we operate up here thinking we have a feeling, like, we think our community is telling us affordable housing is important. We think they're saying sustainability and climate is important. We think we hear them saying economic development is important. We took a sample, and, and those things that we've been working on are actually like the top themes. So I felt really good that what we've been trying to do in going into our retreat, um, that the things we've been working on are pretty in sync with the things that are, the areas, things we should be working on. Um, I think we're going to hear more out of the plan, is, I think there's big picture priorities and also more specific things. But I'm really happy that we're doing this exercise. It's not cheap. It's a big investment in, uh, resources of people. But I think that's why, if you want to do good government, you have to find, you know, uh, you should public input. And so I, I'm really thankful that we've hired such good consultants. We have such great, great staff support. And I encourage everyone to do social pinpoint, and the ideas, well, all those things are up there. Um, and attend the meeting on the eighteenth in, in April, which will be interesting. So, um, bye.
And as we watch, uh, the invasion of the train and toll, I think we can be, we can, we can help us, because you don't really know what to do to help. And I think that I find a lot of comfort in helping the people around us and helping our own community, um, as a way of extending good, good faith and goodwill up to the world and always keeping the communities at heart. Um, and I think it's also important, I know Counselor French has popularly mentioned that, um, it's important not to be overwhelmed by these things, and that we should never give, give away our joy. You know, and obviously, our joy is, and really keep remembering that. So, I'm not in yet, um, and we'll have a motion for the adjournment.
I will.
Second?
Second.
All favoritism?
Um.